Voice in City Hall. I offer a moderate perspective to the issues that currently face our city. You know, I think most of Austinites do not identify with extremes, and that's why I want to offer the moderate voice. Our city is great, so diverse, it's so green, and that's the reasons we all love it here so much. However, the irresponsible budget policies, the lack of direction to address the homeless population, and increased taxes have eroded the foundation of what makes this a great community. For the last several years, my husband and I have considered moving out of Austin for much of those reasons. But we've decided to stand our ground and really plant our future for our family in Austin and also to make a change within Austin so it's a city we are proud to be a part of. I offer, as a moderate woman, I have friends and neighbors in our community that may not agree with everything. We may not agree on everything. However, when there's compromise, we come together and we realize we all want the same things, and that's what's best for our family and for our city. And so that's why I'm running for Austin City Council in District 10. I want to make a difference. I want to make it a place we're all proud to be a part of.
Thank you. Mr. Easton?
Hello, everybody. Greetings. Thank you for having me this afternoon, this evening. I can't really see myself, so I don't know if I'm coming through. So I am a philosopher. I'm a teacher. I'm a writer. I am the common sense candidate. I tell the truth plainly, boldly, and repeatedly. I will not, absolutely will not, be speaking the language of moderation. I will be speaking the truth. I will not be catering to any constituents, my constituents or any others. I don't care whether you're black, or brown, or blue, or green, rich, or poor. I'm obviously a white man, and we are a dying breed these days. We are considered passe. We are considered racist. We are discounted by virtue of just my color. I consider that a racist standpoint. So I'm on guard against that, and I'm sure you are too. And right now, I'm actually shooting from the hip. I've got some written stuff here, but I would rather you just see me totally spontaneous. So I'm improvising. I'm responding to what some of my colleagues have just said. I'm just responding to the moment. So I want you voters, you know, I don't expect to be elected. If I am, I'll be delighted, because I don't think you guys are ready for me. I don't think you're ready for someone to tell the truth. I will be telling the truth boldly with language that most people aren't willing to use, and I'll be saying it proudly and gladly, because that's the most important thing to me, telling the truth. Getting elected, that would be icing on the cake. So telling the truth is by far the most important thing to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sethi, you'll have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. It's an honor to be here with you all today. My name is Pooja Sethi, and I'm running for Austin City Council District 10 because now, more than ever, every voice needs to be heard in your local government. I have a demonstrated history of building bridges across our city. I'm an attorney, a small business owner, a mother, and a nonprofit founder for women, and I'm ready to serve you. I know what it means to have people depend on you, to have to meet payroll, to have to do schoolwork. I also have been actively involved in our local government since 2016, and I truly understand how city policies affect our lives every single day. When I first moved to Austin and saw women fight to get back into the workplace, I started a nonprofit to give mothers a voice. When COVID-19 struck and forced us to shelter into place, I created a task force, partnered with city services, to feed our most vulnerable communities. During my time as a commissioner at City Hall, I fought for more transportation for our seniors, services for women who face family violence, and funding for census outreach. I fought for our small businesses, our climate, and our city to be safer, stronger, and greener through my work with the Greater Austin Asian Chamber of Commerce and my work on the Climate Plan Steering Committee for the city of Austin. Most importantly, as an Austin City Council member, I want to be accessible. I know we need more voices to be heard because ultimately, this is our city and our home. And as our city gets more divided and more unaffordable, I know we, as a city, can be better. I'm endorsed by the University of Texas Democrats, Black Austin Democrats, Asian Democrats in Central Texas, Workers' Defense Action Fund, Run for Something, Friends of Austin Neighborhoods, and numerous local organizations and local elected officials and District 10 residents. I want our District 10 residents to have a leader who brings our district together, listens to our communities about issues like public safety, and to have a council member who will develop real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Verden? Ms. Verden, you're still muted.
Hi. I'm Jennifer Verden, and I'm excited to be running for this District 10 seat on the Austin City Council. As you probably know, this race for the D-10 seat is highly competitive, so I'd like to speak to what makes me the best candidate. I'm a native Austinite. I was born and raised here, and I've witnessed the evolution of Austin over the past 53 years. I'm a lifelong resident of what is now our District 10. I grew up in Northwest Hills, went to public school here, and I'm a graduate of the University of Texas at Austin with a degree in finance. My platform has not changed since the day I filed to run. It is that I intend to restore the $150 million that were cut from APD's budget and to fully fund all of our first responders, to reinstate the public camping ban, to help defeat Project Connect 25% tax increase, and to carefully protect D-10's neighborhoods when the next proposed version of the Land Development Code comes down the pike. I've been running my real estate brokerage firm for the past 30 years and my remodeling business as a general contractor for the past 15 years. I'm a successful businessperson who knows what it takes to run a budget-based enterprise in Austin, Texas. My real estate and building experience have given me the necessary background to understand what to look for in our future Land Development Code rewrite, and I have personally experienced the trials and tribulations of working with our building permit office, unlike any of the other D-10 candidates or any of the current council members. I'm not a polished politician. I'm just like everyone else in District 10 who's sick and tired of the current city council's flagrant disregard for the best interests of the citizens of Austin. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the city of Austin for hosting this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the students would like to ask some questions on inequality. And this question, the first three that are going to answer this question, the only three are Ms. Alter, Ms. Green, and Mr. Easton. According to the city's demographer, the population of District 10 is the most affluent of Austin City Council districts. What responsibility do you feel you have, if any, to ensure that your district's residents understand and respond to the challenges and frustrations posed by rising inequality and lack of affordability across the entire city? Ms. Alter. Ms. Alter, you're still muted. You hit it twice.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So thank you. I think that's a really important question, and it's one that reflects the fact that as a city council member, you don't just represent your district. You have responsibilities citywide. And I have taken very seriously my role to inform my constituents. I have a regular newsletter and have regular town halls and am often sharing news of what's going on in other parts of town and the decisions that we make. I want to focus in on COVID, which I think has really laid bare the importance for us to protect the most vulnerable in our community. COVID didn't hit everyone equally, and we, as a city, have mobilized to protect those in nursing homes, to protect the homeless, and to protect our essential workers, which tend to be younger and black and brown. We have got to mobilize resources with respect to this health crisis so that we can all be safe. And we are only as safe as the least vulnerable among us.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Sorry. Okay. So I think to address the issue of equality and affordability, we should start absolutely with taxes. The increased property taxes makes it hard for any Austinite, whether in our affluent District 10 or not, unbearable. One thing I would strive to do is increase the property tax exemption to 20% from the 10% it's at currently. This affects everyone. It affects homeowners. It affects renters. It affects business owners alike. Increased property taxes makes it hard for everyone to afford to live in Austin, not just District 10. Additionally, I think, you know, I have noticed over the years, our district pretty much looks like us here. But I don't know that you, how much... I don't know how much... Oh, sorry. Got off track there.
All right. Mr. Easton? And I'm happy at any point, if you all need me to repeat the question. I'm happy to do that.
All right. So hey there. Actually, would you mind repeating the question?
It was just, they were asking, according to the city demographer, the population of District 10 is the most affluent of Austin City Council districts. What responsibility do you feel you have, if any, to ensure that your district's residents understand and respond to the challenges and frustrations posed by rising inequality and lack of affordability across the entire city?
Okay, so that question, my response to that is, it certainly, the districts have different demographics. Probably District 10 is the most affluent. So what do we owe, those of us who live in District 10, what do we owe the rest of, you know, the other people in the other parts of the city? So I believe that this is a loaded question. It's got PC gobbledygook written all over it. It's got victim status written all over it. Like I said earlier, I'm not going to speak the PC language. I will say, you can consider me elitist. You can consider me privileged. I did grow up that way, but I work hard for my money. I pay taxes. I don't owe anybody anything except for respect. So I'm doing my best, and I will expect everyone else to do their best to just treat everybody with respect. That's it. That's all I owe you. That's all you owe me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will be for Ms. Sethi, Ms. Verden, and Mr. Thomas. And again, the students doing their research into the city. Again, it's on inequality. And according to the city demographer, data from the 2000 census indicates that nearly 6,300 District 10 residents live below the poverty level. What land development changes would you advocate to support and encourage affordable housing in West Austin? Ms. Sethi?
Yeah, I think this is a great question. I think that we've all seen the most recent study by MoveOn.org that found that Austin is the least livable U.S. city for minimum wage workers. With this in mind, I would support development options that provide affordability without displacing our Austin families and our communities of color. On city council, I would support increasing affordable housing in collaboration with our neighborhoods in District 10 and AISD, increase transit-oriented development with affordable housing, diverse building types, and ADUs that align with any transit plans that we approve in November. I would also work to simplify and ease the city of Austin permitting processes for homeowners, business owners, and builders. I also know that there was a housing equity overlay, and if I was on council, I would have also supported that. I think it's very important that we create density where it's appropriate and have housing types all over Austin so that people can live and afford to live in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Verden? You are muted again. There you go.
Hi. Okay, so first of all, I think about 55% of our residents in Austin are renters, and I guess 6,500 or so are below the poverty level in District 10. But the first and foremost thing that I would do to increase affordability is not pass projects like Project Connect that is going to increase everyone's property taxes, the city property taxes, by 25% starting this year. And those expenses are passed on directly to every renter. As a landlord, I pass on my increase in insurance, taxes, all of my expenses. They go right through to the renter. So I believe that most of the low-income or below-poverty-level residents in D-10 are renters, and that's the first place I would start, is not increasing property taxes, which is going to increase their rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you so much. Well, you know, as a workforce commissioner, I traveled around the entirety of the state looking at the level of employment and unemployment for the state of Texas, and that included Austin. The reality is, the budget is a disaster. Pushing for affordability, failing to push for affordability projects at the same time that they're raising billions of dollars in proposals is an irresponsible way to communicate a commitment to affordability. I think at the end of the day, we should look to reducing our budget. We should be looking to auditing our budget as the citizens of Austin made a proposition for two years ago that was not supported by the council. And we should also be looking to figure out why it is that when we look at affordable housing, we talk about that D-10 doesn't have any, or we pretend like it doesn't. We have some of the greatest amount of affordable housing and for folks in D-10. We have a huge number of apartments. We have a huge number of duplexes. I think it's irresponsible to lump D-10 and say that we're not doing our part.
All right. The number one question that we had coming in our public box was on the police funding. And so what we've done is we have separated this into two questions. The three of you, starting with Ms. Green, and then Mr. Easton and Ms. Sethi, are going to address those that were in support of the protesters. And so this question came, this is how the question is worded. Following the recent protests over systemic racial injustices in policing, the current council has voted to reduce Austin Police Department funding, eliminating police officer positions, canceling cadet classes, reallocating dollars from the police budget to other city programs, and transferring certain police functions to other agencies. If elected, what would you do, if anything, to further address the protesters' concerns? And we will start with Ms. Green.
Well, I honestly think our current city hall did nothing, or very little, to address the protesters' concerns. The protesters weren't asking to reallocate funds or to move forensic department out of the police department or the 911 call center out of the police department. They were asking for real change. I think that real change, those reprioritizations would have been better, would have made better use to have more police training and better police training, not less police training. We need a stronger police force, not a smaller police force. We are weakening the city by not allowing the current cadets to come in, which we all know by now, the 51% were minorities, which was what the activists and the protesters were asking for, more diversity in our police force. So I think I would immediately reinstate the incoming cadets. Then I would address the concerns of a better, stronger police force that is involved in the community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Easton?
So when I was a young man, I marched on Washington and protested the draft, actually, the registration for the draft. So I know what a protest should look like. I know what it used to look like. I think that the protests nowadays are not protests. They are riots. They are thugs. They are brutal. They are criminal. They are ugly, and they are way beyond any kind of respect for law and order. So did some of the protesters behave? Certainly. But there were enough of them that were totally out of line. So I'm frankly not sympathetic at all to the protesters being, quote, "manhandled" by any Austin Police Department officers. I think that the fact that Black Lives Matter, whoever the people were that went out there and painted big yellow letters on Congress, that's outrageous. They should have been arrested. They should have been fined. I do not like that at all. The systemic racism, that's ridiculous. I don't believe that there's systemic racism. Do I believe that there are some racist individuals that need to be, you know, trimmed or prosecuted? Or convicted of something? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Easton? And Ms. Sethi?
So I was on the 2016 Criminal Justice Committee, Mayor's Task Force to Undo Racism and Systemic Inequities. And we had a plan, and some of the action items have still not been implemented. And through my own work as an attorney, I know that we need actual police reform to diminish some deep systemic inequities. So I would like to see us working with advocates, community members, and our first responders to truly start dismantling racism and systemic inequities. I would advocate for implicit bias training and continued professional development among our law enforcement. And I also believe in putting money into resources in our communities to create a system of prevention over punishment. And that's why, after speaking to many, many constituents across District 10, I created a community centers plan. This is a plan that brings our resources back into our neighborhoods with victim services if you face assault or family violence, property investigators if your car, business, or home is broken into, and access to mental health resources. After speaking in my district, people were upset that the police didn't come on time, so this will... Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, this is the other part that came in on the inbox was... And this will be, we will start with Ms. Verden, then we'll go to Mr. Thomas and Ms. Alter for this question. It's the same on the funding. Says, "Given the city council vote to remove funding from the Austin Police Department budget, many citizens are concerned about the public safety consequences of disbanding the park patrol, cutting the DUI unit in half, reducing the violent crimes and gang unit, and leaving vacant positions unfilled. Please explain how you would address these public safety concerns as a council member if elected." And Ms. Verden, we will start with you.
Well, that's easy. If elected, I would refund, I would make sure that our police force is fully funded and restore that $150 million that just got defunded. That's why we have these concerns. I have these concerns as I'm going to the parks these days myself, or my daughter goes to the park. We used to not have to think about that. Now we do. We have, we don't know who's lurking behind every bush in every park now, and I would just, that's how I would address it, is restore the funding to our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I agree. That's super easy. The bottom line is 81% of African-Americans in the country said that they wanted not to defund the police, and over 20% said that they wanted to increase the funding and police presence in their communities. Austin is no different. I would immediately reinstate the full funding to the police department. I would immediately move to reinstate the full cadet class. I would immediately move to ensure that we increase the amount of funding to make sure that we move to full funding. We are currently, with this cut, will be at 2015 staffing numbers. We don't have enough policing in District 10 as it is, and we're much less safe. The reality is, all the statistics that have come out since the current council members have voted to defund the police have resulted in Austin topping the worst list. Crime has increased. We are not more safe. We are worse off than we were four years ago, and that is a travesty.
Thank you. Now, we're going to do the same with this question, and this is on the code, the Land Development Code?
Did you want me to answer?
Oh, I am so sorry. I am so sorry. Ms. Alter, you are correct. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I think I got it. So let me explain what we did. We did what a board does that prioritized public safety. And we decided that we needed to reinvest limited funding that we had for public safety into things that would make our city safer, like additional services for our homeless, violence prevention, substance use response, and EMS. What we did as a body was work to make us safer because I believe that we can root out racism and ensure public safety. The issues that we face are something that we have to understand are impacted citywide. I know that I hear from my constituents that they want more patrol officers. What I've come to learn is that their lack of patrol officers has as much to do with the fact that there's other parts of town that are feeling over-criminalized, and they're having too many police in their neighborhoods. What we're trying to do is send the right resources to the right problem, and we're working with our leadership to get the right choices done. The last thing that I want to say, which is, I really think is important, is that we need leaders who are not going to encourage violence and who are not going to talk about manhandling and riots. We need to say things that protect our city, not undermine our safety.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alter. And we're going to do the same on this question, on the Land Development Code and development in general. The first, we will begin with Mr. Easton, and then Ms. Sethi and Ms. Verden on this first question. "A successful developer of affordable rental units in Texas cities told us that neighbors' fear of density and traffic is something many developers face when they propose urban infill projects. Yet, building outside the urban core results in sprawl, strains resources, and contributes to our traffic congestion. How do you propose to resolve the conflicts presented by these development challenges?" Mr. Easton?
Yes, well, generally, I trust developers, bankers, architects, and engineers. I mistrust government, community boards, and special interest group helpers. So the free market, the profit motive, is the way that people get the best, the best things at the cheapest price the quickest. So I trust developers to build where they're allowed to build. This is obviously granting that the code has already been straightened out. So I'll answer that another time. But given, any given, given whatever the code is, the developers will build the best density at the best price and the most attractive because otherwise, they'll go out of business. Thank you.
Ms. Sethi, how do you propose to resolve the conflicts presented by these development challenges?
Yeah, so I have done this work. As a commissioner, when I, on the Greater Austin Asian, the Quality of Life Commission, I have done this work. I have advocated for our Land Development Code to be simpler, translated into multiple languages, and have more community engagement with all communities.
languages, and have more community engagement with all communities. We need an updated land development code, and my vision for Austin is one that is more accessible and affordable. I believe in transit-oriented development, and I believe that any land development code we have needs to prioritize this. We need to create more compact misuse, mixed-use communities where people have access to their jobs, small businesses, arts venues, and homes. And I would also support an affordability plan with the utilization of land banks and working with local developers and neighborhoods on building up our affordable housing. We need to work with our communities, and we need to update our land development code. It is imperative for the city of Austin. We cannot continue on with the sprawl that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Verden?
Hi. So, in regard to District 10, I know that that's not a real popular thought, is not increased density along our residential transit corridors. So, because I'm representing District 10, I'm going to have to listen to my constituents. We, I have proposed in my land development paper on my website that, you know, I might be inclined to entertain our being able to add one ADU per residential lot, but I'm not in favor of, you know, of any kind of rezoning along our main streets like Greystone, or Far West, or Exposition, or anything like that, as far as increased density in our residential areas, because the neighbors don't want that. So, all I can say regarding the increased density in D-10 is, I'm going to do what our neighbors want us to do, and I want to protect our green space here. We, thank you.
Thank you. All right, for the next three questions, same topic. We'll start with Mr. Thomas, then Ms. Alter and Ms. Green. "We are all familiar with the term 'time value of money.' According to a number of developers currently building projects in our city, the length of time and the difficulty of the City of Austin permitting process is a contributing factor to the increased rent and rising home prices. The time it takes to build in the City of Austin is twice what developers experience in other major cities. Do you agree or disagree with this? Please explain." And Mr. Thomas, we'll begin with you.
Great, thank you. I fundamentally agree. I mean, the data is unequivocally clear. Not only is it twice as long, but it is exceedingly much more expensive. Again, it goes to the core issue of whether or not the council is committed to affordability, or whether the council is going to give lip service. Giving lip service is saying that you're going to enact a property tax reduction, but then pushing for tax increases seven out of the last eight years of your budget cycle. Talking out of both sides of your mouth is talking about affordability, but then increasing the cost by putting costly propositions on the ballot that don't serve the totality of the city, or that are boondoggles. At the end of the day, we need to go back to a reasonable, thoughtful plan, not driven by special interests, that fixes the land development code, follows more along the lines of Imagine Austin, that protects and preserves the character and the charm of our respectful and respected, respective neighborhoods, and allows for the appropriate growth consistent with what the community of those neighborhoods want. That's the only way that we can address this issue."
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Oh, is it me?
Thank you. So, I've been working since I got on council to improve our permitting process. We've increased the staff of our Development Services Department. We've built a Planning and Development Center that's a one-stop shop, and we're moving online with our permitting. I chaired the Audit and Finance Committee, and we recently had an audit, and we continue to push our Development Services Department to improve. I voted against Code Next and the Land Development Code revisions because they didn't do what they needed to do in terms of making the code simpler. Everything that was added at the last minute, in particular, was just adding more and more complications rather than making a simpler code. But this is a two-pronged thing. There is work to be done in Development Services and with other departments that affect the permitting process, and I've been in there doing that work. And then we also need a code that can work for the regular, everyday Austinitans.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Sorry. Yeah, I think the permitting department in Austin is, it is lacking. You know, I'm in food service cells, and it's a common joke amongst restaurateurs trying to do, build a new restaurant, or to do something in the restaurant, that there's one person working in the permitting program, and they're like on a landline in the basement somewhere. It's a terrible program. It's very time-consuming. Community members, I know that, electrical engineer and home builders and remodelers, they spend more, they lose more money going through all these steps and hurdles the permitting program implements. Additionally, when you have folks coming out to do the inspections, you might get three different answers from three different people, which costs everybody more money. If you're costing the builders more money, you're costing whoever's purchasing the land more money, or the property more money, and then eventually, the renters more money. So, if we want to talk about affordability, the permitting program is definitely one way to go, and, stop.
Thank you very much. All right, this question is for all of you, and this was the number two question under police funding that came in our inbox. "In light of the city's current policy to allow those experiencing homelessness to camp and live in public spaces, what solutions will you work on, if elected, to address the needs of our homeless population while at the same time responding to those concerned about the safety and sanitation issues related to public camping?" And we will begin with Ms. Sethi.
I'm sorry, I don't know if it was just me, but the question cut out a little bit while you were speaking. Could you repeat the question, please? Sorry.
"In light of the city's current policy to allow those experiencing homelessness to camp and live in public spaces, what solutions will you work on, if elected, to address the needs of our homeless population while at the same time responding to those concerned about the safety and sanitation issues related to public camping?"
Thank you. Thanks for repeating. Yeah, so, I am an attorney. I am on top of case law, and I know the Supreme Court came out with a ruling last year that affirmed that we cannot criminalize the homeless if this city is providing. And per the City of Austin website, we only have 2,000 beds, and in last count, we actually have more homeless people than that. And I don't want our city to potentially face another lawsuit. Therefore, we need to be aggressive about developing long-term solutions, and we need to do it immediately. So, the solutions I would come up with are getting better data of our unhoused populations and people on the brink of homelessness. This includes people who are sleeping in other people's homes and cars. We need more resources into a rapid rehousing plan. We need to partner with local organizations like the Other Ones Foundation, Camp Esperanza, and provide mental health resources, and we need to work on more affordable housing. And I know that a lot of people in the district want to see the camps cleaned up. We need to work with our local organizations and our community partnerships to work with our homeless on making that happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Verden? You're muted still.
So first of all, I would definitely want to reinstate the camping ban. We have to go ahead and get our homeless population re-centralized where our nonprofits can actually locate them and triage them to all of the existing facilities that we have, the different tiers of housing that we already have in existence, that unfortunately, a lot of our homeless population, they don't want to abide by very strict rules in some of these shelters that we provide. So, we do have the five-acre campsite over by ABIA, which is a perfectly safe, five-acre site for people to pitch a tent and have regular social services, meals delivered, and regular police patrols. It's a nice, safe place to be. So, I just think that what we're doing now is unacceptable, and it's no way for us to be living in the City of Austin. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, as you may know, I'm getting my PhD in healthcare management policy. And what the city council has created is a healthcare crisis to rival that of the pandemic. It is fully irresponsible. The very first thing that we have to do is recognize that the camping ban, the sit-stand-lie ordinance, and the anti-panhandling ordinance, all of which, at least two of those that Council Member Alter voted to support, created this nightmare. The reality is, all three of those ordinances need to be reinstated immediately. That is not inconsistent with compassion for our homeless community to ensure that the totality of our community is safe, secure, and that the healthcare crisis is abated. Secondarily, it is critically important that we work with our community partners like Community First Village, who has indicated that the difficulties of working with the city make it less than desirable to take money from the city. We need to look at Haven for Hope in San Antonio, which has absolutely done a phenomenal and reasonable process of making sure that our homeless can get off the streets. There's more we can do. You can't make knee-jerk actions.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Would you mind repeating the question, please?
"In light of the city's current policy to allow those experiencing homelessness to camp and live in public places, what solutions will you work on to address the needs of our homeless population while at the same time responding to those concerned about the safety and sanitation issues related to public camping?"
Thank you, Carol. I really appreciate you. We stayed in the question again, because I want to thank the students for how they framed the question, because I think it's the way our whole city should be thinking about this, and it's the way that I'm thinking about this issue. In 2019, I voted against the repeal, sorry. I voted against the repeal to the camping ban because I didn't think the city had a plan for what came next, and I believe I was right. I believe we need to compassionately help our homeless neighbors to transition into housing and manage our public spaces. I have been focused on three things since that vote: managing the public spaces, increasing investments in immediate needs, and also reforming our contracting processes. Sorry, I don't know if you can hear me at all. For too long, we've been measuring our success by how much we've spent, and those days are over. I've been focusing on getting us a targeted strategy, or focusing on specific populations so we can get results. I will continue this work in my second term. We need to increase the supply of permanent supportive housing, and we need to work with realtors and landlords. I also want to mention that I champion a program called Workforce First, which provides job training and wraparound services and employment to individuals experiencing homelessness. Thanks for bearing with me. My scoop voice.
Thank you, Ms. Alter. And Ms. Green?
So, I think we can all agree, what's currently happening with our homeless population doesn't work. We're spending $60 million a year, and depending on when or who we ask, there are anywhere between 2,000 to 2,500 homeless folks out there. When you divide that up, that's $30,000 roughly, give or take, per person. When I look out of my neighborhood, I do not see $30,000 being spent when they're sleeping in an old nasty tent surrounded by filth. The question isn't about the sanitation and cleaning up the area, it's about the safety of these individuals. I would first reinstate the camping ban, then identify our most vulnerable: the women, the minors, the veterans. Find them a temp, get them in a temporary home on their feet with medical help and mental help where needed, provide them an address and communication so they can get the services that are likely already out there for them. But since they don't have an address or communication, they cannot access those services. They, we would then temporarily house them, get them on their feet, and then get them a sense of pride and dignity to live out on their own.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Easton?
This is the primary issue of our age, if you ask me. This was the reason I decided to run for office and be a candidate for city council. So, it sounds like most of you are ready to put lipstick on the pig, but guess what? It is ugly, it's ridiculous, it's insane. I would immediately reinstate the ban, I would criminalize it. It is outrageous that these people are living where they are and hanging out where they are. Yes, they are destitute, they are homeless, they are having a bad day, bad week, bad month, but guess what? That's not my problem or yours, in the sense that it's our responsibility to live with the ugliness that they are creating by just being where they are. I would immediately, within a week or two, remove all of them, spray wash, power wash, clean it all up, and restore the beauty of the city back to where it was several years ago. And meanwhile, where are these people hanging out? Well, they'd be removed to some city-owned or county-owned property several miles from the city center, and they can be dealt with there safely, humanely, quietly, privately, with the same specialists, the same community people, with the same PhDs, doing all their same stuff. Do it immediately.
Thank you very much, Mr. Easton. Thank you so much. All right, this is our last question, and it came under, there was a number of questions that came in, and we've combined it into one question. And this is on city services and perhaps some environmental impact. And it was from roads and bridges to storm systems and sewage treatments. Our city's infrastructure is strained due to the rapid growth of Austin. What are the infrastructure needs of District 10, and is the city doing a good job of keeping up with the demands imposed by our population growth? And we will begin with Ms. Verden?
First and foremost, I think we need to do something about Spice Wood Springs Road. We've got a three-lane road from Mesa down to 360 that's been under, been under consideration for improvement for, I don't know, two years or whatever, and nothing's been done about that. But the other thing, as far as infrastructure, I think that we've had about all we need to do on Shoal Creek with those crazy bike lanes and those plastic poles sticking up everywhere, and those speed bumps, that if you ran into one of those with one of your bicycles, you'd kill yourself. So, I'm really just thinking we need to, first of all, slow down as far as spending money, spend the rest of that $400 million transportation bond, and only 20% of it's been spent so far, and stop building bicycle lanes and squeezing down our, all of our car lanes so that we can still drive through this town. But anyway, I think we're doing fine in D-10 as far as infrastructure. We have some projects, but we're luckier than some of the other districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thomas?
I fundamentally disagree with Ms. Verden. The reality is that the core function of a municipality is provide public safety and the local services necessary to live in a community. That includes electricity and water. We have failed to maintain and keep up with our need for water, for the water needs of the city, of District 10 and the totality of the city. Our electric grid is dilapidated, and my neighbors are constantly having power outages when the wind blows even a little bit. It fundamentally, the city has failed to understand that its first and foremost role is constituent services. It's about potholes, public safety, streetlights. It's about fixing the core things that we all expect to live in the city. The city has failed. No, District 10 has suffered hugely. The water breaks every summer when it gets too hot, flooding the street, losing billions of gallons of water from our district alone is ridiculous. No, we are not electing people focused in our, and I don't care what their education is, understanding what their core responsibility is based about the state of Texas Constitution as a home rule city.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
All right, so, this is a top priority of mine. We definitely have a lot more work to do on our infrastructure. I voted against Code Next, the rewrite of our land development code at every decision point, precisely because I think it did next to nothing to address the infrastructure demands that it would create or that are already existing. I don't believe it managed our growth well. I've also dedicated a lot of time to addressing our city's deferred maintenance needs and pushing the city to get innovative in our infrastructure tools, whether it's the loan structures that we use or other things. Because of my work, we've significantly increased our investment in addressing our deferred maintenance needs for city infrastructure. That ultimately saves us taxpayers money because it extends the life of our investments. I've pushed successfully for infrastructure upgrades in the district to address water and utility outages because simple preventative maintenance had been poorly maintained. Ratepayers should expect a high-quality utility and keep fighting for those investments. I led the Austin Water Oversight Committee's creation to provide direct council oversight of our water utility, precisely because we had heard so many concerns on unexplained bills, pipe leaks, issues with zebra mussels, and of course, the boil water notice. I know the ins and outs of the system and its shortcomings, and I will keep pushing for those reforms. Some of you have had energy in your backyards lately of fixing the trees, and that's because of the work that I did to prioritize getting that done for the district.
Ready for me? I got muted again.
Yes.
Okay. Robert kind of took the wind out of my cell. Our electricity in our neighborhood goes out all the time. In the last four weeks, it's been out four times, once for three hours, and I have a pod full of third graders. Good grief. We, you know, I can't say we have to spend less money within city government and then complain about some of our utilities. Smarter with the money we are spending at the city government. We can get with our high-tech community to build smarter utilities, smarter electricity, smarter water infrastructure. It was a few years ago when we were part of that group who was, received a really large water hike for no reason at all, to be nicely. So, I would say we should work smarter and spend our money wiser within the utilities to make them more efficient for the city government and for the citizens who are paying the monthly bills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Easton?
My view on this is pretty simple. Stay within the budget. Do what you're supposed to do in the first place before you start new projects. So, I would say minimize all these social field-good community projects, helping them over here, helping them over there. No, we're not going to help anybody if we can't, you know, take care of our own selves. Charity begins at home. Some of you young people don't know what that means, but I'll tell you, it means, it means clean up your own mess, you know, empty your own trash, make your own bed, do your own thing, and then if you have any extra money, then maybe you can build or give it away somewhere else. So, fix the roads, fix the potholes, and make the city do what it's supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sethi?
Yeah, so, this is why it is important to have a council member who is on the ground, ready to fight for you, and ready to stand up for your needs. There are streets in our district, like a street in Tarrytown, where there are signs on the road that say, "Please drive slow because kids are here." And that's because time and time again, there have been car accidents on that road. Safer streets is a major priority of mine in this race. I want safer streets to schools, sidewalks, and safer roads across our district. It is necessary. I envision that our district has the infrastructure that we need to meet our increasing demand. We also have a proposition on the November ballot, and I would, if I was on the dice, I would have fought for my district to have safer streets, sidewalks, speed bumps, and streetlights that we badly need. So, yes, this is a priority, and we need more infrastructure in our district. I will also add that my electricity also goes out with a little bit of wind and rain. Thank you.
Thank you very much for answering our questions. Now, we'll go to our two-minute closing statements, and we will begin with Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us. First and foremost, I ask you for your vote. Please go to Please go to www.robertatx.com, donate, and donate to help us win District 10. Here's the bottom line. As you've heard tonight, there is no other candidate that has the level of experience, background, or ability to hit the ground running day one, including our incumbent, to address the issues in District 10. Moreover, there's no other candidate that has the background and experience of having employed hundreds of Austinites in multiple businesses, having practiced law in this community, having represented our community with Austin Independent School District in multiple different capacities, having represented our community at Austin Community College in a bond oversight capacity, having fought for our district over and over and over again to get the services that we need. The reality is gentrification has it hit District 10. The reality is, public service, public service is a calling that one has to be committed to. The bottom line is, we must immediately reinstate the camping ban. We must immediately refund the police. We must seek to reform the police with our police assistance. We must absolutely work against 25% property tax increases that our council member voted for, supposedly representing our interests. And most importantly, we have to figure out how to bring common sense, reasonable, pragmatic solutions to the dais. I ask for your vote. I ask for you not to be fooled. I ask for you to listen past and through all of the diatribes and understand that this is a critical election. Austin is not going in a good direction. This is our opportunity to fix it. I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Alter?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the city for hosting tonight's forum, and to those of you who are watching, thank you for joining us. My name is Allison Alter, and I'm a leader with a proven track record of accomplishment. I have never craved the spotlight. I was recruited to run and chose to stand for election because I wanted to serve my community and knew that I could do a good job. I am a pragmatic problem solver who believes it is important to keep an open mind, to listen to new ideas and different perspectives. I am not driven by ideology, and I look for long-term solutions rather than short-term political wins. I ask tough questions, and I'm willing to take difficult votes. I know how to stand my ground and find common ground. My relationships and experience best position me to be a voice for my district while also addressing citywide needs. I've been successful in making policies better, even when I ultimately disagree and vote no. I am a Democrat in a nonpartisan seat, and I've worked hard to represent all of my constituents. I have a fabulous council staff that is there to help each of you navigate city bureaucracy and help you engage on broader issues. I respond with compassion and real action, and I've always been honest with my constituents. I understand the impact of city actions or inaction on businesses and residents' lives, and I have the policy skill, knowledge, and experience to shape effective policy across these many issues. I invite you to learn more about what I have accomplished while in office at AllisonAlter.com. I've been a champion for neighborhoods and managing growth responsibly, and thus voted against Code Next. I've invested in parks and trails and accelerated our efforts to achieve net carbon zero emissions and zero waste, and to prevent wildfires. I've supported our schools and invested in our children. During COVID, I'm focusing on bringing our community through this crisis and working to address the longstanding inequity. My name is Allison Alter, and I'm proud to be your District 10 representative. I believe the best days for Austin are in front of us. I hope I have earned your vote.
Thank you very much. Ms. Green?
Hi, thanks again for having us. This has been a great discussion. I'm Belinda Green. I am a mom and in food service sales for 12-plus years in Austin. I'm engaged with our community. I'm engaged with small business owners and local business owners. I understand the needs of our community. I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I don't fully identify with either side, but I do share values with both sides. And I consider myself a person of reason who listens and who, where we find compromise, to do what works best for the city. I want to offer a moderate voice in City Hall, listening to us, listening to everyone, and to make this place a place we're all proud of, that we can all afford. Get control of our property taxes. With the taxes we do have coming in, make sure they are going, they are being used the best possible way. Every dollar is being stretched like we're doing at home right now. I would also want to immediately reinstate the camping ban and get control of our homeless population and get them off of the streets and on their feet. And lastly, I would immediately reinstate the incoming cadet class as well and support our APD through better training and not less training. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Easton?
Yes, first of all, thank you very much to our hosts, the Ethics Commission, the City of Austin, and the League of Women Voters in the Austin area, as well as the TVATXN and the, I forget now the radio call number, but anyway, but thank you all for spreading the news of our points of view. I appreciate that. So I'm the no-nonsense, common-sense candidate. You know, I've got a degree. I've lived a number of decades. I moved to Austin in 2003, literally for greener pastures, and it was that for a while. But for six or eight years, it has been less than that. So it's going in the wrong direction. So you all have heard, you all have heard my strong language. Move the camping, the homeless people out of that, out of, under overpasses and on park benches and in places where they don't belong. Move them immediately. Put them somewhere where it's safe and sound. And fund the police, fund the fire department, fund others, and that's pretty much it. You can go find out more about me on BenEastonDistrict10.org, and I would appreciate your vote. If you like what I, if you like where I'm standing, then please vote for me. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sethi?
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters and the City of Austin for holding this forum. I am not in this race because of one issue, but I'm here to create real solutions for you. I have been working on the ground since before I became a candidate, speaking with our communities, and I know we need new direction. If elected, I will bring your voices to the dais through a District 10 Advisory Council, discuss votes taken on the dais before and after they are taken, hold regular office hours, and make all of my constituents feel heard. I also know we need someone who will listen to families in the district and fight for safer streets to schools. We need someone who will fight for our city to be more affordable, and someone who knows how to bring our first responders, our communities, and our advocates together. For me, running for city council in District 10 is also personal. From Tarrytown, where my sister and nephews live, all the way up to Great Hills, where I'm raising my family, to District 10 residents to have safer streets, live in a clean and green neighborhood, and have a voice in your government. My name is Pooja Sethi, and I'm asking for your vote so I can represent District 10, truly work to build bridges across our district and across our city, and lead us to a brighter tomorrow. You can find out more about me at poojaforAustin.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Ms. Verden?
Hi. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the City of Austin Ethics Review Commission for this opportunity. I hope my platform resonates with the viewers. If it does, I would be honored to have your vote on November 3rd. Early voting runs from October 13th through October 30th, and just as important is your vote again for Jennifer Verden in the runoff on December 15th. Please visit my website at JenniferForAustin.com to review my platform, volunteer, or request a yard sign. Just to make sure everyone in D-10 understands, if Prop A passes, have your checkbook out this January and be ready to write that approximately $650 check to cover your 2020 escrow account shortage. And you know, it's only going up from there, starting in 2021. In District 10, we can't afford it, and we can't board it. One last observation for now. District 10 is on the far left of the map of Austin, but most of its residents don't have far-left views like defunding the police. Let's finish strong at the polls and bring common sense and true D-10 representation to our city council. Please vote for Jennifer Verden on November 3rd and in the runoff on December 15th so we can restore funding to our first responders and restore our city to its former beauty. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, candidates, very much. Thank you for your sincerity in answering our questions this evening. Here's some dates for everyone. October 5th is the last day to register to vote before the 2020 general election. In Texas, early voting begins October 13th and ends October 30th. October 23rd is the deadline to apply to vote by mail if you are eligible. November 3rd is Election Day. Our Nonpartisan Voters Guide will be available online, and the paper copies of the Voters' Guide will be available around town and inserted in the Austin Chronicle the week before early voting begins. Your personal ballot can be viewed now at vote411.org, and is now, it's live and populated for everyone. Vote411.org was launched by the National League of Women Voters Education Fund in 2006, and it's a one-stop shop for all election-related information. We appreciate your attention from wherever you are listening. Thank you, and have a good night.